Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 11th meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll? Carla?
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick.
Hales.
Here. Well, good morning, everyone. We have some very pleasant, non-council item business to do this morning because we've got students here. We're going to talk about literature and publishing and studying our city. So I just want to welcome everyone here. First, I want to welcome back to Portland with another group of students, Professor Atsuya Yoshida from Tokushima University. He is here again with his students. Welcome to Portland. Nice, great having you here.[143.12][143.12][applause] And then we also have a proclamation up front and another one in the council calendar. This one's also about literature and actually involves one person in particular on my team. So I'm going to exercise this privilege. It says, "Whereas Portland is a city of readers and a city of writers, and whereas Portland is home to Powell's City of Books, one of the greatest independent bookstores on the planet, as well as a wide array of smaller but also excellent independent bookstores, and whereas Left Coast Crime, an annual gathering of mystery authors and mystery fans, has chosen Portland for its 2015 convention, and whereas the longstanding book club in Portland, Friends of Mystery, is being honored for its contribution to the genre, and whereas mystery authors Chelsea Kane, Timothy Hallman, and Gar Anthony Harwood will be honored at the convention, and whereas whodunit fans from all over the country will gather March 12th through the 15th at the Doubletree by Hilton Hotel in the Lloyd District, and this is not here, but whereas one of the participants will be our own Dana Haynes. Now therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2015, to be Left Coast Crime Day in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day, not by committing an actual crime, but by reading one of these great authors' books about crimes."[233.12][233.12][laughter][234.12][234.12][applause] Dana, this is for you. Dana has an amazing life discipline, which is he, in his very little spare time, writes books.
Yeah, wow.[248.54][248.54][applause]
Mayor, normally at a moment like this, the guest that you've honored would hand out free copies of his book.[256.64][256.64][laughter]
I'm sure that could possibly be arranged. Okay, let's move on next to communications items because we have a group here to speak to us as well, also students.
First item's 252, request of Renalt Alles Catalani to address council regarding youth leadership at Harrison Park Elementary School.
Polo, come on up and why don't you bring the first of your team? Yes. And speaking of writers and writing.
253 also, request of Janice McDonald and Tim Schultz to address council regarding safe routes to school and Harrison Park Elementary School Jade Journal project.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, City Council. Thank you, Ms. Moore, love for your patience and your persistence in getting us on the calendar this morning, for getting our Harrison Park students, their teacher, sitting to the left of me, and our staff to the right in front of our city, our city council. My name is Renaltang Sayan Catalani. I facilitate our city's immigrant and refugee integration programs. It's a constantly changing set of eight city bureaus and newcomer community partnerships, integrating our city's 70 or so vigorous ethnic streams into the life of our robust mainstream. Key word here is integration. The integration of subtle Portland's wealth in parks and environmental stewardship, our nationally envied livable neighborhoods, and transportation alternatives, our priceless community policing, blended deliberately with our New Portlanders' abundance of social, cultural, and spiritual wealth. This mix, this joint bank account is enormous, and it's growing every day. It's complicated, but that content's for another discussion for another time. This morning, I'm humbled to present to city council the central ingredient of all of our equity and practice partnerships, the love, of course, of Harrison Park teacher, Mr. Tim Schultz, his love of education, but more to the point, at the core of his curriculum is teacher Tim's love for his students' families. It is, of course, your transportation bureau staff, Janice McDonald's, love of biking, running, and walking, but it's really about her love for our shamelessly ambitious immigrant families and their bright and brave children. So I'm really humbled. I'm honored to introduce my colleagues in this field. We want to make sure to thank Mark Moscato, so sorry, from Know Your City, worked with a grant with Regional Arts and Culture Council to deliver these children, to deliver these newspapers, deliver this morning. We're so proud of everyone. And Janice, folks may know, grew up in the Mexicano Barrios of Houston. I thought she was just another Mexican chica with the crazy curly hair for years and years. And Tim has only one vowel in a family name of seven letters, and I'm happy to sell him some of my vowels. So I think we'll start with Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Polo. Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Tim Schultz, and I'm a teacher at Harrison Park. I'm here to speak out for bald people everywhere. Just wanted to lighten it up for my students there a little bit. I'm here to help give my students a voice with issues affecting their community. I want to share with you how the Jade Journal came to be and explain why my class wants to speak with you today. In working with Mark Moscato and Travis Neal from Know Your City, we created a curriculum to create a classroom newspaper. Mark, Travis, and I sat down with the writing curriculum and worked to integrate it with our newspaper project. We also organized guest speakers to teach the students specific skills that they would need to be able to create a newspaper. Before each lesson, Mark Travis and I would go over our goals for the newspaper project to make sure we were staying focused and working together. We discussed how we wanted the paper to help all students understand and to feel a pride for their community and neighborhood. We wanted to give all of our students a voice to share what they think is important in their lives and the community. And it's really important that you know that the Jade Journal and the articles in it came from the students in the class. It was not given to the students by adults. These came from the students, from their hearts, and from what they cared about. Articles such as "How the Internet Is Making Us Dumber" came from a homework assignment from one of the students in my class. Every class we spoke to, we had, we spoke to the students about how this newspaper would only be successful if it came from them and their hearts. The articles are a reflection of what the students in my class felt were important for people to know. The Jade Journal was created by the students of my class and is a reflection of the challenges they face and information they hold. It was inspired by kids who are incredibly talented and knowledgeable, each in their own way. I sincerely hope you enjoy what my students share with you and are inspired by them like I am every day in their class as their teacher. Thank you so much for having it. It really means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. My name is Janice McDonald. I work in the Bureau of Transportation on Safe Routes to School. As you know, Safe Routes to School is a partnership of schools, communities, city of Portland, community organizations and agencies to make it safer for people to walk and bike, roll around their neighborhoods into school. The program started in 2005 with eight schools in three different school districts and has grown to over 100 schools in five different school districts. Safe Routes encompasses six Es: education, encouragement, valuation, enforcement, engineering, and equity, but I think it's time to also add an A for advocacy. In the Jade Journal, the students from Harrison Park are advocating for the livability of their city, neighborhood, and school. They are advocating for themselves and their safety of getting to and from school. These youth are becoming leaders in their community by voicing their concerns and taking initiative and finding solutions. In our work with schools, Safe Routes staff are building youth and adult partnerships. We have attended student council meetings and organized focus groups with students. We are asking how Safe Routes can benefit their school communities and the livability of their neighborhoods. We are listening to their voices and working together to come up with solutions. We are excited about the initiative that these young people from Harrison Park have taken to get to know their city. The Safe Routes school staff look forward to collaborating with these youth to build upon their efforts so students are safe to walk, bike, and roll to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, all three of you. Appreciate you being here and having our kids understand they own this place and they have a stake in steering its future. So thank you for taking that approach to these young people. Look forward to hearing from a few of them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim, maybe you and Carla can orchestrate what happens next.
Yeah, I think there are three to call, correct?
Why don't you just bring the children up? You have on your list.
Yeah, you want to stay there, Tim? Then we can pull up another chair if you want to bring all three of you.
First up, we have Joe Chan.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Joe Chan, and I'm a student from Harrison Park School. I am here to talk to you about our safety and how we can make it better and safer for people. The first thing that I think will make our community better is more sidewalks. I think more sidewalks would make us more safe because we can walk on them so cars and trucks don't drive where we walk. One time when I was walking to my grandma's house, a car almost hit me because the street that I was walking on had no sidewalks. It's really important to walk on sidewalks because it will prevent death, and kids, teens, and grownups could walk to school or go to work easily. In our community, mostly kids get hurt because kids walk to school and home. There was a kid in my class who nearly got hit by a car while walking to school because there were no sidewalks. There should also be police around places where kids walk and play, but the police should be nicer to us and help us out more. And to do that, they can watch out for bad people and help us when we get hurt. The last thing that I think will make our community safer is more street lights and crosswalks. It will make us safer because it will stop cars from speeding and people can cross roads without watching out for cars. I also think that the crosswalks should have more time for people to walk because some old people walk slower. So there you go. Those are the things that I think will make our community better. Remember, safety is important to everyone. I really hope that you make a change to our safety. It is really important to us, and it might be for your family, too.
Thank you. Thanks very much.[845.76][845.76][applause]
Next up is Samantha Martinez Mendoza.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Samantha. I am a student at Harrison Park. I am here to speak up for what I think is wrong in my community. I want to share with you how unhealthy food affects my neighborhood. I always have one of my friends inviting me to eat hot Cheetos or Takis when I really don't want to eat them. I live really close to a 7-Eleven, and I sometimes wonder, why don't I live next to a healthy grocery store? I want to be able to walk to a store that has good and healthy food for my body. When we are almost out of our fruits and vegetables, my mom has to drive far to get what we need. Me and my family want healthy food because it's not only healthy for you, but you get nutrients and vitamins in your body. I want my community to know that they are going to be able to walk to a healthy grocery store. I really do hope that when I am playing outside, my friends are eating healthy snacks, not all those chips and candies. I hope that you can make that change in my community. Thank you for hearing what I have to say. Have a wonderful rest of the day.
Thank you.[930.44][930.44][applause]
And next up is Joey Chambers.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Mr. Mayor and city councils. My name is Joey Chambers, Jr. I highly doubt you know who I am, but I know who you are. I'm just a normal fifth grader that has a lot of the same thoughts about Portland that other fifth graders have. The school that I go to is called Harrison Park. Our school is in the Jade District on 87th Avenue. I'm here today to share my thoughts on the Portland Police Department with you. My thoughts on the Portland Police Department are, first, I think that the police need to be more socially observant because some people are walking around the streets scared of being killed, mugged, raped, kidnapped, or attacked. Example would be, one day, my sister was walking to come see me and my little brother at our old house on Powell. On her way to our house, a man in a blue car said, "Hey, baby, get in." After that, she ran all the way to our house and was okay since once she got to the house. Second, my old teacher, Ms. McCormick, was about nine years old when a man in a car started to follow her and her friend to school. So they started, and they eventually, they started to run, and then they eventually got away safely, but almost got kidnapped. That's why the police need to be more vigilant and patrol more often and not just on one street. They need to patrol all the streets of Portland because if bad people can't do one thing on one street, they'll do it on another. The reason I care about this stuff is because, first of all, I don't want my hometown that I'm from to have a bad reputation because I'm going to be a famous baseball player when I grow up. Second of all, I don't want my kid to grow up the way I did. I hope you put some thought into what I said instead of just listening to what I said and be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1043.52][1043.52][applause]
So perhaps you saw the announcement yesterday that we're going to be having a new baseball team in Portland that'll be playing at Lenz Park starting in 2016?
Yeah.
So you'll have a lot of good college players coming to play over the summer. There'll be 30 home games at Lenz Park and better Little League facilities, too. So yes, we are listening, and thank you for your testimony.
Good job, Polo. Have any more, Tim? Andy? Andy? We still can't see. I don't know if that's just...
Next up is a very excited Andy Nguyen.
Good morning.
Hello. My name is Andy Nguyen. I'm a student at Harrison Park School. I'm here to give a voice to my community. I'm here to talk about police. There are things happening in my community that shouldn't be, so I'm here to put that to a stop. I want people to know kids and teens are getting hurt. Police should be driving around neighborhoods. People are mugging other people's on the streets. Robbers are breaking in houses with guns and scaring families. Police should also walk around schools. Homeless people are just sitting around and looking for kids. Police should be more focused on kids. Police should also worry about things that be on the ground. Kids see all types of things. They find gun shells, drugs, and broken beer bottles. They might get caught or even die. Other things are when people who speed. Last week, I was walking home, and a car almost hit me. I had to jump out of the way before I got hit. If the police were on that street at that time, they could have stopped the person in the car. I'm just worried kids in my neighborhood aren't safe, so I'm going to stop that.
Great job. Thank you.[1178.52][1178.52][applause] Next up is Vicki Tran.
Hi, my name is Vicki Tran. I am here to tell you that we need a change in our school lunch. The food makes me sick. We need a change in our food. I want you to know that our food is bad. The food is dirty when I eat it. I find hair in my food. We need real food because some of the food is fake, like, for example, cheese, because the cheese won't stretch like real cheese. The cheese that we have breaks. People need to donate money for real food and better food to eat like a fundraiser. We also need cooked food because the food is sometimes uncooked, and it makes me sick sometimes. Lunch ladies should be able to cook the food. The food we eat is boxed, and it should be made, not boxed. Boxed food is unhealthy for your body. I get sick when I eat the food. Also, when I eat the food, it's either dry, uncooked, soggy, or dirty. When I eat the food, it dries up really quick, like macaroni and cheese, for example. It dries up within a minute. I think that we should have better fruit to eat because the fruits are not clean. Portland Public Schools serves snack almost every day, and when I get the fruit, it's either dirty or rotten. The lunch ladies need to wash their fruits better so we can eat them. We should also have different drinks beside milk, like juice. Thanks for listening to what I have to say. I hope you make these changes soon. Have a great day.
Thank you.[1288.76][1288.76][applause] Got one more?
Next up is Elaine Tang.
Hi, my name is Elaine Tang. I am a student at Harrison Park School. I am worried about the community is eating most stores' unhealthy food. I want you to know that we need a change in our food. I likely want everyone to know that they are putting unhealthy foods in their body. I also want some more healthy foods added into stores, also removing the unhealthy food. A lot of people are eating sodium, calories, fat, sugar, uncooked, and overcooked. Some stores are even hard to get to. Where I live, there are not a lot of healthy stores around. Healthy stores are at least seven miles away from me. I think there should be more healthy stores around for the community to get to. I think healthy stores should be somewhere around southeast 82nd Street. Our community is getting sick eating the unhealthy food. What people eat gives them bad or good health. One time, I saw a group of guys eating unhealthy junk food. After an hour, the group of guys were getting sick and laying on the ground. After that, the group of guys got help. Our community means a lot to me. That's why we need a change in our food. The food is very unhealthy for kids like us. I sincerely hope Portland, Oregon could help my community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for doing this. Thanks so much for bringing these kids today and for getting them involved in our community, making really good points to us as community leaders about healthy food and safe streets and better police protection. So we get a lot of testimony in this room. Not all of it is this well thought through or this well presented. So nice job. Let's hear it for all the kids.[1421.76][1421.76][applause] And we have copies of this here for everyone, the wonderful publication that was mentioned that I read yesterday, and I think it's great. Nice work. Keep up the good journalism as well. Thank you all very much. Let's hear it for Harrison Park.[1445.76][1445.76][applause] Well, that was a great start, and we really appreciate them being here and for all of us to have the chance to hear that. So we'll move on to the regular calendar. We have a proclamation and then a report as time certain items, a very brief consent calendar and a few regular agenda items. So let's start with item 257, please.
Did you want to dispose the one item on consent first?
Sure, we can do that. We have one item on consent. Anyone want to take it off consent? Okay, going, going. Vote roll call, please.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. Okay, 257.
Proclaim March 15th through the 21st, 2015, to be Young Audiences Arts for Learning Week.
Mr. Fish?
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I'm pleased to welcome our honored guests with Kerry Clark, Young Audiences Executive Director, and his two special guests. Please come forward. 2015 is an important year for the arts. We're celebrating a number of milestones, including Portlandia's 30th birthday, the 35th anniversary of our Present for Art program, the 10th anniversary of Work for Art, and thanks to the generosity of Portland voters, this year, approximately 70 teachers will be in schools spread out over six school districts teaching the arts to over 30,000 children. That's quite a year. And today, we get to take some time and recognize one of our great local arts organizations, Young Audiences of Oregon and Southwest Washington. Before I introduce Kerry, who's no stranger to this building, I'm pleased to read the following proclamation that the mayor is issuing today. Whereas Young Audiences of Oregon and Southwest Washington has been inspiring the young people of Portland and expanding their learning through the arts since 1958, 1958, by the way, was a pretty good year, and whereas the city of Portland recognizes the critical role that the arts plays in the development of young people by fostering creative thinking, grit, collaboration, and the 21st century skills they need to succeed in school, work, and life, and whereas Young Audiences of Oregon and Southwest Washington is the region's largest and most dynamic arts in education nonprofit organization, serving nearly 80,000 young people in over 200 schools annually, and whereas Young Audiences leverages the considerable artistic resources of Portland to benefit children in partnership with educators through innovative programs such as Arts for Learning, the Run for the Arts, the Right Brain Initiative, and the new Live S E T, which stands for Sound Engineering for Teens, and whereas the nationwide network of 30 Young Audiences affiliates is rallying together for National Young Audiences Arts for Learning Week to raise awareness for art and education initiatives in the schools and community venues, and whereas the city of Portland stands proudly with other cities, counties, and states throughout the country to celebrate the vision of, quote, "all the arts for all the kids," end quote, to consider how far we have yet to go to achieve that goal, and to thank Young Audiences for its leadership in making real progress towards it. Now therefore, I, Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim March 15th through the 21st, 2015, as Young Audiences Arts for Learning Week in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this week. Let's give them a round of applause.[1720.91][1720.91][applause] Kerry, congratulations, and take it away.
Thanks so much for the proclamation and for making the time to have us in this morning in the midst of all the important work that you have going on, both to mark a milestone for Young Audiences and to celebrate the work that our community is doing to ensure that the arts are part of all kids' education and life. Joining me today are Judy Rompa, the president of our Board of Directors, and Audrey Quo, our Development Director. We're honored to be here to commemorate Young Audiences Arts for Learning Week with you, as is happening in many communities across the country. But before we get to that, we wanted to share just a little bit of information about how we at Young Audiences of Oregon and Southwest Washington are doing our best to serve this community, about which we all care so much. Young Audiences has been bringing the creative resources of our community into collaboration with classroom teachers for the benefit of kids since 1958. We are the largest and most comprehensive arts education nonprofit in the region, serving, as you said, nearly 80,000 children annually and nearly 200 schools in partnership with over 100 teaching artists and arts ensembles. That service takes many different shapes, and I'm pleased that you've actually seen one example recently here in council chambers. Just the other week, during the Regional Arts and Culture Council State of the Arts presentation, Young Young Audiences' teaching artist Erin Nigel Smith led a classroom of fourth graders from King Elementary in a civil rights resistance song, which they'd learned as part of their exploration of civil rights issues in their class. This was a part of a Right Brain Initiative residency, uh, program that we at Young Audiences couldn't be prouder to be a partner on. Now, across Portland and beyond, Young Audiences' teaching artists are working with students and teachers in countless different art forms, from theater to music, animation to textiles, and beyond, um, all to explore all manner of curricular and cultural questions. You can see that service taking place in the shape of residencies, workshops, and performances in classrooms throughout the city. But some of Young Audiences' most important work takes place behind the scenes through our professional development offerings for classroom teachers and teaching artists. We're proud to be the go-to resource for quality teaching artist training in this community. Now, at this point, I'd like to turn the mic over to Audrey to share with you about a new signature program that we're launching and an exciting milestone that we've just crossed.
Uh, thank you, Carrie, and good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Audrey Quo and I'm the Development Director for Young Audiences. We're very excited to be launching a new program next month called Live Set, which is a live sound engineering training course we're producing at Mississippi Studios in North Portland. Live Set will offer ten underserved Portland high schoolers from north and northeast Portland this spring an opportunity to get real, real-world hands-on experience in the art and science of live sound engineering, giving them an employable skill and connections with the professional community and a cohort of peers. We're excited that this program will be free for students, and we invite you to join us on May third at Mississippi Studios for a concert that the Live Set students will engineer to showcase what they've learned. And I'm also delighted to be able to make an announcement here for the first time anywhere. Many Portlanders are familiar with, um, Young Audiences program, Run for the Arts, which has been helping students raise money for their schools for their arts programming for thirty-seven years. Just this year, we have hit a critical milestone, and the Run for the Arts has now raised more than fifteen million dollars for the arts over its history. And it just happens to be great timing that that's happening in two thousand fifteen. So, hopefully, we'll raise another million in two thousand sixteen. We'll come back and announce the sixteen million mark. Um, but that fifteen million dollars is helping schools engage students through the arts, which has been proven in study after study to improve academic performance, literacy, grit, graduation rates, and just about every other positive outcome you can name, especially for English, English language learner students and those coming from low-income backgrounds. Young Audiences is very proud to be a part of that. And with that, I'll yield the floor to Young Audiences Board President, Judy Rompa.
Thanks, Audrey. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Young Audiences of Oregon and Southwest Washington is part of a national network of Young Audiences affiliates who are uniting together across the country to draw attention to the importance and power of arts education next week. By proclaiming March fifteenth through the twenty-first, Young Audiences Arts for Learning Week, you're helping Portland declare its support for arts education and the role of creativity and joy in the lives of all children. As the Board President of Young Audiences, a parent, violinist, teacher, and lifelong Portlander, I want to thank you for your steadfast support of the arts and arts education. The work of our organization simply wouldn't be possible without the critical grant funding we receive from the Regional Arts and Cultural Council, the Arts Education Access Fund, and Work for Art. Your support is truly making a difference in changing young lives, opening up worlds of possibility. Please know your support is vital and that we appreciate it tremendously.
Now, uh, it's one thing, we realize, to hear thank you from us. Uh, so we wanted to try and bring you one step closer to the thank yous that we represent and that really matter, those of Portland students. And to that end, we've brought each of you an individual thank you note from students from Woodstock Elementary School that they wrote to Young Audiences' teaching artist ensemble, Dragon Art Studio, who visited their school recently to share the art of Chinese puppetry with them. And I think that you'll agree that these illustrated thank you notes are pretty darn special, and we'll bring those to you in a moment. Uh, we're also extending an invitation to each of you to the Night on the Town with Young Audiences Gala that we have coming up this Saturday, March fourteenth, at Pure Space in Northwest Portland. We'll be celebrating fifty-six years of inspiring children and expanding their learning through the arts in Oregon and Southwest Washington, and we'd love for you to be a part of that. So, thank you once again for having us and for all that you do to help service organizations like ours, ensure that creativity is a part of every child's life.
Thank you. You know, Mayor, um, I- I have the honor of representing the city Saturday night at the gala, and I'll read the proclamation that you have issued. Um, but I just want to take a moment to reflect on, uh, a number of events that we've celebrated over the last two weeks. And this was not intentional, but it's- it's just played out this way. It- it began with, um, the State of the Arts presentation, where, as you noted, there were the young people from an elementary school who sang. And there was also a young woman who won the poetry slam contest. And we were very inspired by that. Um, fast forward, uh, Portland Public Schools hosted a showcase at the Newmark Theater, where artists from all throughout the, uh, school district came and performed, and the visual arts, uh, were- were displayed throughout, uh, the theater. And they're now downstairs. We have, uh, we have paintings and sculpture and representative work. And then Friday night, uh, Josh Albert and I were at the Schnitz, uh, for a concert, um, of the Metropolitan Youth Symphony, which is a, you know, world-renowned youth symphony. But what was truly amazing about that night is they were joined by artists and musicians from Beaumont Middle School, Grant High School, and Wilson, who all participated with them, both as musicians and choirs, celebrating the arts. Every one of those events highlights something very important, which is the importance of investing in young people at an early age through the arts. And when we got our report a number of months ago on the Right Brain Initiative, the council was flabbergasted by the data, because it turns out that young people were performing well in all kinds of areas because of the arts. And so, we know that's working. We know that the kinks in the arts tax have been worked out, and more money is now going into the classroom and going, uh, out as grant money. And then we have all of these nonprofit organizations that are doing amazing work. And, um, I've had the great pleasure on two occasions of writing a check for one of my children who did Run for the Arts, and then going to every house in our neighborhood, contributing to that fifteen million. Uh, Carrie, you- you made a big difference when you were here in this building, uh, working with Mayor Adams and working on arts issues. And you're now continuing to make a great difference at, uh, Young Audiences. So, uh, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you all for your great work.
Thanks very much.
Should we get a photograph, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Uh, can we, uh, acknowledge the rest of our Young Audiences supporters in the room? And would they be welcome to join us for a photograph? Great. Thank you.
Oh, great. Oh, this will be fun. Thanks very much. Yeah, I suspect Commissioner Fritz, which I was, was reminiscing about, uh, those of us who are veteran parents of the Portland Public School systems of, uh, many, many Run for the Arts, uh, efforts with our kids.
Yes, I was explaining it to my staff, uh, yesterday, uh, some of whom do not have children, and, uh, basically, children run around in circles. And the question was, well, how's that different? And the answer is, well, the parents count how many circles they have run around. And those of our, uh, who have extremely competitive children practically drop dead at the end because they've run, run so hard to do so many laps.
Yep, they do. They worked hard at it. That's great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, item two fifty-eight.
Accept report on Portland Parks and Recreation Park Ranger Program.
Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor Hales. This is in response to your request in the budget to have a report on Portland Parks and Recreation's Park Ranger Program. Um, here to present this morning is, uh, Galina Burley, the Park Security Manager, and Park Supervisor Hassan Arthory. Assistant Director Warren Jimenez will be manning the PowerPoint.
Well, good morning. Uh, thanks for having us here today. My name is Warren Jimenez. I am the Assistant Director of Portland Parks and Recreation, and it's a pleasure being here with a couple of colleagues, uh, Galina Burley, who is our Security, uh, Manager, and Hassan Arthory, who is our Ranger Supervisor, who, uh, get to go in and, and give you that update today. So, it's a pleasure being here this morning to talk about the Ranger Program.
Warren, are you doing a PowerPoint?
I am.
Because I, we, apparently, our, our monitors don't work. Do you want us in the audience so that we can see it? Oh, here it is.
There it is. Pull it up right now.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for having us, uh, here today. I should say dobra utra, which means good morning in Russian. I just had to do that. Um, before we go into our report, this report is just a synopsis of current state and some history. Um, we will provide you with information about our, um, current staffing levels. What's very important in this report is that we had to divide the city in east and west side. Basically, the river is the dividing point, and that's going to be very helpful when we talk about our data and our staffing numbers. In front of you is a really nice quote from one of our community partners. I'm not going to read it. It speaks for itself. And then I'm going to go ahead and dive into a few points that we'll cover in this presentation. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we'll go through the program overview and background. We'll talk a little bit about performance measurements, um, current staffing levels, and a few policy options for city council to consider. We have, uh, in Portland, our Rangers are ambassadors, which means that they are charged with providing information and educating park users, gaining voluntary compliance, as well as enforcing park rules throughout the city of Portland. I don't know if you knew, but our program started about twenty-five years ago. Back in the early nineteen nineties, the program was started to provide additional support, eyes and ears on our growing system. At that time, we did not have any permanent Rangers. We had one Ranger Supervisor and about ten seasonal staff. Our program continues to have a seasonal component, March through approximately October. In two thousand and ten, thanks to Commissioner Fish, we were able to receive our very first permanent Ranger in Forest Park. In two thousand and eleven, again, thanks to Commissioner Fish, we were able to convert some of our private security dollars from Central Business District. I'll refer to it again in my PowerPoint. And that helped us create three more full-time Rangers. In two thousand and thirteen, uh, we had, uh, converted our contract to lock up bathrooms. Citywide, we lock up approximately sixty bathrooms or all over the city, and that led to a creation of few seasonal positions. And very recently, in two thousand and fourteen, we started our Washington Park Program. Dedicated funding from parking revenues pays for three full-time Rangers and approximately three thousand hours of seasonal staff up there. Um, so, what does all of this mean, all of this history and all of these great commitments? It means that today, we have about fourteen Rangers on daily duty available to patrol our entire system, eleven thousand acres, two hundred-plus properties. Those fourteen Rangers, that number varies a little bit. Um, again, I mentioned, we have a seasonal program. We have a few extra Rangers in the summertime. But typically, we have seven Rangers, um, seven full-time Rangers paired up with seven seasonal Rangers. We do work seven days a week, by the way. So, as I mentioned earlier, the previous commitments in Washington Park, Forest Park, and CBD led to all of our full-time Rangers being on, uh, the west side of the city. Again, use the river as your dividing point. And on east side of the city, typically on a daily basis, we have a couple of Rangers, um, available to respond to what we call calls for service. And our capacity east of the river has been very limited. Calls for service is something, uh, new to us. Um, we've always responded to calls for service, I should say, but we started a new customer service program. A few months ago, it really came to fruition to help us be a customer service point, a storefront, as well as a place where residents could call and make a report about any issue in the park system. Uh, we get about two hundred to three hundred calls for service per month, and we are educating community members, as well as our partners, to use our dispatch customer service function to make their phone calls to the program so we could then prioritize our resources and deploy Rangers to places where we have chronic problems. In the next visual, you will see that our co- uh, calls for service at the moment, um, are much higher for east side. On average base, it's about sixty percent of all calls that come from east side of the city. This map illustrates the few points I already made a little bit better. The city is divided in west and east again. Looking at the west side, you will see that calls for service average rate is about thirty-six percent. Um, eighty-six percent of our Rangers, again, uh, mind you, it's daily staffing level. We do use management discretion to assign them to different parts of the city we need to be. But most of them are assigned to west side. And then east side...
And that's because of the funding, it's dedicated funding.
Dedicated funding, uh, various commitments that were made over time. Yes, ma'am. Um, east side, which, again, geographically includes, uh, includes all of north Portland, all of east, inner southeast, southeast. Um, we have fourteen percent of our Rangers assigned. Um, the model has been very reactive, to be completely honest. We, you know, have to dispatch Rangers to different parks, let length spark when things come up. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the calls for service is a lot higher for that part of the city. I think I have a couple of more slides to go. Um, one of them is our performance measures. I should add that we have quite a few more performance measures. They're all noted in your report, the, the document that you received earlier. Um, some of the measures, uh, we are developing, uh, currently and making some changes to how we track that in general. But for the purpose of today, what we'll cover are percentage of residents feeling safe, walking in the park alone. That's an auditor survey outcome. It's a very important outcome to us. Number of positive and educational contacts. As I mentioned earlier, Rangers are ambassadors, and counting positive contacts is, is very important. Number of park warnings and exclusions we write. We do have authority to, uh, issue both. Um, nuisance abatements. Hassan will talk more about what that means. And then various camping contacts that we make throughout our system. Before I turn it over to Hassan, I know I've pointed to him a couple of times, the very last thing for me is, um, we have this slide here. It's the City Auditor Survey. Um, I don't know if you s- you could see different colors. Uh, but if you look at the very, very top line, it's blue on my hand, um, you will see that overall perception of safety, according to the auditor survey, and they do it based on neighborhood coalitions, I believe, um, has gone up. We've gone up over the last few years from seventy-nine to eighty-three. Small margin, but, but a good one. If you look at north Portland right below that, and east Portland way below at the bottom in dotted green line, you will see that those two are tracing behind the rest of the city. East Portland gone up and down, currently, um, tracking at about fifty-seven percent. Now, Hassan will tell you a little bit about our performance measures and our successes in the field.
Thank you, Galina. As you review the next few slides and data, please note that one-time funding to increase Ranger staffing in two thousand and twelve carried to two thousand and thirteen and created additional capacity to respond to and, and, uh, address more issues in the field. As such, in June two thousand and twelve and thirteen, we have more Rangers, uh, excuse me. Um, in the summer of two thousand and thirteen, for example, the program had close to thirty seasonal staff, uh, compared to the summer of two thousand, uh, uh, two thousand and fourteen, where the program capacity decreased only twelve Rangers. Uh, the Rangers, the reports by Rangers typically go up in the summer months because of additional seasonal capacity from March to October. As Galina mentioned earlier, uh, Rangers are trained to be ambassadors first and do their work on enforcement continuum. Their primary job is to, uh, to ensure that each park user enjoys their time in Portland Parks. They attempt to make positive and educational contacts first and use exclusion authority only when it's necessary. As you can see in the, in the data, the number of positive and educational contacts Rangers make greatly outweighs the number of exclusions and warnings. With that said, the top three parks where exclusion and warnings were issued in two thousand and fourteen include Washington Park, Governor Tom McCall Waterfront Park, and South Park Blocks. The top three reasons for warnings or exclusions include alcohol, controlled substances in park, and camping. Rangers also address about twenty-five hundred nuisance issues per year. These activities range from litter pickups to disposal of hypodermic needles. In addition, the Rangers work with community groups and agency stakeholders, such as the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, graffiti abatement, and the Willamette River Keepers to help keep parks clean and safe. In addition, Rangers assist people living outdoors with access to social services, and they also address to attempt to abate property-related impacts. All Rangers are trained to assess the situation and attempt to help campers find alternative sleeping arrangements, and most contacts made in the field do not lead to camps needing to be posted or removed. If a posting or camping, if a posting of a camp is necessary, Rangers provide those, uh, those individuals with, uh, in- information to join and also let them know of other social service opportunities. Uh, we work with Joind to, to find shelter for anyone who is medically fragile or with child. Rangers also provide advance notice prior to cleaning. Up to seven days, but at least twenty-four hours, um, unless there's a significant safety risk, uh, we provide, uh, campers time to gather their belongings as well. Um, Rangers coordinate removal of trash, and if campers have any salvable personal property, we tag it and take it to the storage for thirty days. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Galina to... Now I'm going to turn it back over to Galena to let you know how ranger presence makes a difference.
Well, I think you've already covered how it makes a difference. Let me highlight a couple of very special examples, and really, the key here is consistent ranger presence. So most of my examples are going to be west of the river or nearby. In Washington Park, we started the program, as I mentioned, in January of 2014, and we put three full-time dedicated rangers, as well as a number of seasonal staff, to support about 500 acres of property in various venues. What we've seen in Washington Park is refreshing. According to police data, the number of reported crimes type 1 and 2 for the park has declined by 50%. Now, I will tell you, more research is needed to understand the link between rangers and crime data and declining by half, but it's certainly refreshing, and these early results are encouraging. Another great example, how many of you know Holiday Park? Holiday Park had a great private and public partnership there. Last summer, we received funding from a private partner who paid for both ranger security capacity and for programming in the park. So I need to make sure that both of those are included. Rangers were in the park seven days a week, approximately eight to 10 hours per day, and then we also did programming, everything from yoga to various activities for kids. We had a little library in that park. What we've seen during the 2014 Holiday Park Pilot Program is that ranger presence combined with programming in the park made a huge difference. We've seen a decrease in gang activity and park violations. We've seen an increase in the number of people coming to the park just to enjoy it and to participate in programs. And certainly, we've seen that the not-so-positive activity was displaced and positive patterns, use patterns have emerged. Another great example in 2015, thanks to Commissioner Saltzman's office, we participated in the 2015 street count outreach. We did it as civilians. We did it for a couple of weeks. All of our enforcement was suspended. Our rangers had a great time, and they gave out a number of hand warmers and socks to people living outdoors. And one that's very close to my heart, I wish those kids from the earlier presentation stayed, because we work with kids a lot. We have a very successful summer playground program, and last summer alone, our rangers have made over 2,700 contacts with kids. And kids absolutely love to see rangers. You know, we have those junior ranger badges that we bring with us, and of course, we teach them about parks and how important they are for future generations. Before I turn it over to our commissioner, we do have a couple of invited guests that I would like to ask to come forward to say a few words. Jean Quincy, who is a member of Oregon Marine Board and the resident of Portland. And we also have Randy Teague, who's the Neighborhood Response Team Supervisor for East Portland.
Before you do that, are there any questions from council for this panel?
I have some, so maybe we can wait until the end?
Okay. We'll have you come back later.
Thank you so much. All right, so Randy and Jean. We also had a few people sign up for public comment.
We'll have that too. Thank you.
Good morning. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to turn it over to Jean.
Mayor Hales, council members. My name is Jean Quincy. I am here as a member of Wasabi Paddling Club and as a citizen concerned for our green spaces. I would wish to start by expressing gratitude for the additional funding that was allocated to start cleaning up River Place Dock. Due to this funding and the additional presence of park rangers and law enforcement, we are now hopeful that the River Place area is on return to being a safe, clean, and enjoyable place to engage with the river. Thank you for making the safety of your boating citizens important. The funding truly has made a difference. We ask that it become permanent so that the progress continues to be made, as there is still much work to be done. When our waterfront groups reached out to help with the continued lawlessness on the river, it became apparent that there were simply not enough park rangers and/or law enforcement officials to get the job done. And the waterfront is just one of Portland's many outdoor gems. I also bike along the East Bank Esplanade, and I hike the trails of the local parks, such as Hoyt and Forest. Our green spaces are fabulous, but all of them are prone to the same influx of abuse by those that would use these spaces not for recreation or engagement with nature, but for dealing illegal substances, prostitution, and general lawlessness. In a city proud of its parks and green spaces, we must ensure that our citizens utilize these spaces in the manner intended and that the spaces are safe. Simply, we need more parks rangers and law enforcement. I think we even heard that from the children earlier. From the website of the park rangers, what do they do for us as citizens? Couldn't be said better than the first two paragraphs. They serve as goodwill ambassadors, provide positive presence in Portland parks and park facilities. Rangers serve multiple roles by providing information, helping solve conflicts, and enforcing city code. We like to say the rangers are the eyes and ears of our parks. Park rangers work closely with our maintenance crews and other staff, such as those in customer service. They maintain relationships and contacts with the Police Bureau and other criminal justice agencies, animal control, neighborhood associations, youth services, and other social service agencies to identify, prevent, and address concerns within parks. Parks rangers are crime prevention. It's like having an ADT sign in my home window. The present says, "Not here." Please continue to provide rangers and law enforcement in our parks and green spaces and waterways so that all the citizens of the city and our visitors may safely enjoy the beauty we have built. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to my partner in crime prevention, Randy Teague.
Mr. Hales and council. I was actually coming down here today, it was very gratifying for me to be able to see all these kids and to, you know, witness firsthand your commitment to the children in this community. Obviously, in my occupation, you don't, sometimes you don't see a lot of these positive things, and I really appreciate that, I just want to say that much upfront. And it's important to know that 40% of our children live east of 82nd. And that community is a large immigrant community, and in my work with the Africa House, they expressed the desire to have positive role models in the community, and the parks are really an opportunity for council to extend your intent. And the intent that I saw here today can be extended to these citizens, and in working with Galena and Mr. R3 over the last year, they're very committed, and they're doing an outstanding job. These park rangers are professionals. They provide me, from the law enforcement side, a value set of eyes and a perspective that is different than law enforcement's perspective. And it's very valuable to see and to have that information, and then along the green spaces that are a little less controlled than parks, having these men and women out there walking around, they provide a safety net that we're unable to provide, frankly. We don't have the personnel to have people walking these green spaces and paying attention to people. And the consistency, and I know that the ranger program has attempted to have this consistent presence in the community in east side, being responsive to the citizens who have complained and really want some of that vitality in their parks that they see on the west side. And there's, I've been getting a lot of positive feedback, especially on the south end, along the Spring Water Corridor, and it's very helpful to me to have these consistent eyes that can first spot, we have people that live along the trail that are displaced, and they have mental health issues, they have physical issues, they have addiction issues, and to have these consistent eyes out there that can see this person on a day-to-day and see that they are starting to decompensate, or that they are having some problems. You know, they are members of our community, and they deserve protection, and this gives us some continuity in that effort. And it's been extremely helpful, and I work with the parks off and on in the 22 years I've been here, in many capacities, but in my current capacity, and in the last year especially, working with Galena, it's just been way more intense, way more engaged, and I really appreciate the efforts that Parks is putting out, and I appreciate the ranger program, and that's why I came here to talk.
Yeah, I do too, so go ahead, please. Is it officer?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, excuse me. Want to get it right. Sergeant, thank you for joining us. Back in 2011, there was, when the Parks Bureau made the change, there was some concern that was expressed that, and I'll just try to paraphrase it, there was, some people were concerned that with a more robust ranger program, that the communication between the Police Bureau, the rangers, and Clean and Safe might not go as well as hoped. We heard from Commander Day back in 2011, 2012, that the communication was pretty good. But since you're here, could you tell us, since we are talking about coordinating among three different entities, how is that communication going?
It's very good, actually. A member of the team is, we hold a monthly meeting, a problem-solving meeting, that encompasses the entire community, so all issues. So Parks has always got someone there, listening to concerns and presenting concerns, and then I doubt there's a day that goes by that I don't hear from Galena. And we, my guys report daily, on the days they're working, that the parks rangers are out there, that they communicate very specific things regarding people on the trail, regarding campsites, regarding people who may be coming a problem. So my assessment of the communication between law enforcement, at least as far as East Precinct is concerned, and Parks right now is very good. I think the management, I've met with Lynn Barlow has come and talked to me and laid out her concerns for these green spaces, and I've met with Galena, as I said, many, many times, and I'm very appreciative of the program. And when I asked to come down here, I had absolutely no problems. I think that it is improving. I can't speak to 2011, but I can speak to, I've been the Neighborhood Response Team since 2012, and it has just improved incrementally over the years. And I'm going to say 2014 has been a very significant increase in communications and what I see is outreach from the parks.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Yeah, that was my question as well. Let me just follow up on it a little bit, both for you and for the Parks Bureau. Sort of, I'm glad to hear the level of coordination is good now and/or later. Let us know, particularly me as Commissioner in charge of the Police Bureau, what changes we ought to make in terms of communication protocols or anything else to make it seamless between the two sets of folks, and particularly with respect to the fact that we plan to continue to expand walking beats in the Police Bureau, so we're going to have more officers on foot doing what they did, you know, over the last year in downtown and Hawthorne, other parts of the city. So as we expand that effort, how does that need to dovetail with what the rangers are doing? So again, happy to hear we're generally working well together, good, but what do we need to do to make that better? And then, how does the combined effort accommodate the fact that we're going to have more officers on foot or on bikes over time?
Well, I think my, we've had this, we've already talked about this, we had a meeting last month about this topic, and in the area of improving, I would like to see, of course, it's going to cost you money, but I would like to see if we can get rangers on ATVs so they're more mobile. And it's just a training issue, it's a two-day training program. I just put four officers through it, and...
We have a couple of ATVs in East Precinct.
We do, we got five ATVs, and I think that having Parks and Police doing patrol together is effective. I also think that having them just out there together, because our roles are different, I think that's by design, you need to do that by design. So I think it would be up to Parks Management how they want to present themselves. If it's a more enforcement-oriented piece, then I think you bring blue shirts with you. I think if it's an outreach piece, then we govern our response according to that. So I think that there is a fit, I think it does dovetail. I think that the professionalism of the organization dovetails nicely with the expectations of the Police Bureau. And I think that when we start increasing the walking beat, you're just going to increase your effectiveness by putting a ranger with a police officer. I don't, especially, that's a similar model to we did in the Fund Center. For some time, we would split gang enforcement officers up with security personnel and with patrol officers in order to spread the expertise around, and I think that the Parks Bureau brings a certain expertise that officers aren't going to have, and I think that that's a positive thing there.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much. Galena, anything you want to add to that question?
Absolutely, just to add that we've made a number of tactical decisions specifically for that reason, to improve upon already an amazing relationship we had with Police Bureau. So our rangers attend calls for service, roll calls. We do have different expertise. We also attend many of the community problem-solving meetings. We go to every problem-solving meeting at each precinct, and that's been very helpful. The one we have here in Central Precinct is also attended by Clean and Safe and many of our other partners. We are at the table together, talking, brainstorming, coordinating, and it's just been really great to have everyone be on the same page, so that's been very helpful.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
And this is to either of you or both. One of the issues that the council grappled with a few years ago is, is how do you measure success? And I'll give you a specific example. It was the hope of the council that rangers would be working upstream, preventing bad things from happening, building relationships, convincing someone not to escalate a problem, maybe using persuasion to get someone to move along rather than lead to an arrest. But so, but it always raised the question for us, is how do you measure that? How do you quantify that? How do you measure the positive benefits of having someone de-escalate a situation or work upstream so that you don't have a downstream problem?
We could look at the outcomes. We could look at specific parks where we have consistent presence. Washington Park and Holiday Park are great examples of that. While you can't really put a number, and maybe you can, maybe you have to be more scientific than me, on prevention specifically, the value of the outcome of having ranger presence on consistent basis is clear. Crime goes down, positive use goes up. You could quantify that and maybe do a baseline assessment. It's something that we're considering. We're actually looking at possibly adding to the way we measure our data, some of those less concrete measures. But even with concrete data that we have now, we could see a huge difference. We see that the crime goes down, and we see that positive use in parks with consistent presence make a huge difference.
Yeah, actually, let me follow up on that. You may have something else to add, Sergeant, and jump in, please, but we've got, you know, we've got location-specific criminal offense data from the Police Bureau. You've got education contacts. Now that we have a performance dashboard system at the city, we might want to consider graphing those two things together. Presumably, if everything's working, we'll see that pattern, that there'll be more education contacts and less arrests in the same place, you know, roughly the same time. So it'll be, I think we have, it looks like now that you provided us with this data, which is good, we ought to be able to put those two sets of numbers together and look at them, and I think that'd be very helpful for us.
We, directly on point for this, is we've utilized Strategic Services, basically our comp stat people, they've been very good about providing us. We just did a study of the trail, and what we did is we went four blocks on either side of the trail, just to get an idea of what's happening, not only on trail, but how it impacts the neighborhoods. So we have the ability to capture data from the perspective of part one, two, arrests, those types of things. But I, you know, if you'd asked me this question when I had been here for five years, I probably would have answered it differently than I'm going to answer it now. I've come to learn that responsiveness is as important as effectiveness. If you measure effectiveness in numbers of arrests, or if you measure, however you measure that, I think that the responsiveness and communicating effectively is extremely, extremely important, and people understand that we can't just make problems go away, but when we don't respond, they don't understand that. And our responsiveness is 90% of the battle, the rest of it's easy, and I can't emphasize that enough. I mean, if I've learned anything in my time, it's that. And then consistency is the other piece to address. How do you measure and how do you, how do you get to where you're managing civilized and good behavior versus compelling civilized and good behavior? And I think it's just consistency. I spent the first five years of my career in corrections, and you can enforce the rules, because there's a lot of them, but you can enforce two rules consistently and get a lot of compliance. And I think that it's consistency, and I think that's what the Parks Rangers are asking for, is the ability to provide that consistent coverage, and I concur that that consistent coverage is going to go a long way into tamping down the spikes of bad acts, and maybe just keep those acts into just little things that can be managed on the very lowest level. But it's going to require consistency.
I'll just affirm, Mayor, sort of that goal. I think we, there's a lot of agreement on working towards those performance metrics and finding the right ones. And I think what you see in the report is good baseline type of data, and we want to continue to sort of improve those to determine and measure the success of the program.
Exactly, thank you. Other questions? Great, thank you very much.
Galena, how many, what's the maximum number of hours that a seasonal worker can work over the course of a year? They could get paid for...
They could get paid for fourteen hundred hours. They do have sick and vacation, and so that's included, fourteen hundred hours max.
Right. And so what we do, since we do have year-round work, we have to lay people off and hire somebody else, and that also impacts the consistency of coverage?
Yes, ma'am.
And can I follow up on that? And when you lay people off, you run the risk that you can't hire them again, and we lose talent, so. A question I had is, the memo, the written memo that you've given us concludes with some policy options and some funding options. And my question to my colleague is, do you have any current budget asks in the system for any portion of this?
Why, yes I do, Commissioner. I want everybody to know I did not pay him to say that.
Actually, I don't, I didn't know, so I-
No, I know.
Innocently.
So actually, what I'd like to do is take the public testimony and then get down to those policy questions, if we could?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we have no other invited testimony, Commissioner?
Correct.
So whoever signed up, please?
Okay, we have nine people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Susan West, Joe Walsh, and Reverend Charles Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Susan, I think you're first.
Okay, I'm Susan West. I'm Chair of the River Place Condominium Association Security Committee, and I'm turning in a hundred and fifty-four signatures that I've collected this week in support, and you've also received many emails. We want you to know that the River Place docks, parks, and waterfront are loved and used by thousands of Portlanders, as well as hundreds of us residents, but in the last five years, it has gone downhill. The waterfront has gone from being a jewel to an armpit. It is an embarrassment to our city and a danger to our citizens, and citizens are in uproar down here. My ninety-year-old mother, visiting teenagers, paddlers, and tourists cannot safely walk alone now in our River Place neighborhood on some days and most nights. My family and friends are offered narcotics on the esplanade. There is human excrement floating near our docks. I pick up drug needles all the time and see excrement all over our neighborhood. Our cars are prowled, and our residents are intimidated. Bikers with children going to OHSU daycare or the International School right here, Portland State students and commuters pedal on dangerous roads and sidewalks to avoid the new vagrant population that have taken over the wonderful and expensive new bike path under the Harrison Overpass. Enough. Volunteers have been cleaning this area weekly, but we want the city to pass a budget sufficient to consistently clean up and care for high-use areas like River Place. Our parks need enforcement, which calls for an adequate budget, and our citizens need protection. Galena Burley Park Security has been very responsive to our efforts to improve things. The contract between the parks and the Sheriff's River Patrol, putting Deputy Shanks and the crew down ten to twenty hours a week, has been a huge improvement. In a month, we've gone from twenty-five boats controlling the dock to now that we have about fifteen on the dock and around it, plus eight dinghies tied up there. And it's made a huge difference in safety, so please renew the contract. It's a little dangerous, we want the Rangers safe, and we want other people to back them up, to come in, which is the Sheriff River Patrol. Please put money in the budget to clean up park and city public places. Very few people are holding hundreds of us hostage as they use our public spaces as their living rooms, criminal stashes, and drug dens. Now, we're doing our share, really supporting the city of Portland. Down there, we've started a River Place Walking Patrol under ONI's Jacob Rostaf and Mark Wells. We've started a SOL partnership and are cleaning up continually, and we're doing a wonderful spring cleanup headed by the Portland Parks on April eleventh. So we're volunteering, we love you and back you, but we want you to pass budgets that your city and the park staffs need to do their job. We're a hundred percent in support of the parks and your police and the walking patrol. Please give them more money in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks very much. Thanks for your volunteer effort as well. Morning.
Morning, my name is Joe Walsh, I represent Individuals for Justice. We are in full support of the Park Rangers. We would like to see Park Rangers on the east side. We were stunned to find that you have seven positions, if I understood it, and zero on the east side, except for Hollywood Park, apparently being paid by one of the corporations on that side. So we're also mindful that to have seven Park Rangers as permanent positions and then laying off people, as Commissioner Fish pointed out, you lose that talent all the time. And that's sad, because you need the Park Rangers and you need them permanently. I know Commissioner Salzman gets nervous on this, about having more Park Rangers, but to have seven permanent Park Rangers in how many parks?
Two-hundred-and-twelve.
I mean, that's obscene. And the Park Rangers obviously do a better job than, than our Police Department, where we're more friendly, being advocates for the homeless with the Park Rangers than we are with the Police Department. And they do act as ambassadors, but we are concerned that they don't move into law enforcement. So we're, we're a little bit nervous about them excluding people and having that power and not going to their heads. We're all human beings, and when we have power, it's very hard not to misuse it. So we would like to see the program expanded. We would like to see permanent funding. We join in the question about can we clean up better and can we patrol our parks better? You can't do it with seven permanent employees. Again, that's obscene. You know, we spend so much money on so many other things. We need more, and they should be permanent, and we should keep them and value them and thank them often. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Charles Johnson, and as has been pointed out, what's really behind the employment and staffing level of the Rangers is human beings in crisis. So it's actually, although we have to look at budget figures according to department and such, what we really know is that we're not managing the city of Portland budget well enough to deal with human beings in crisis. Some of these people are hopelessly addicted to drugs that they're injecting and leaving their needles around, and that means with the county and the state, we have to find more money to put them in treatment and rehab. We don't yet want to find that money, so we push them around from an area that's enforced by Rangers to an area that's enforced by private security to an area that's enforced by the police. So when we talk about budgeting for the Rangers, we have to remember that joy of joys, it's a competitive situation. We're also talking about creating more stabilizing housing, like we have in the Bud Clark Commons, and it's, now's not really the right time to get into the discussion of substance abuse in that building. But Rangers are deprived of effective tools, just like the police are, to manage these things, because they know that when R2D2 is full, the only option is to send people to jail. Where depending on what level the arresting officer or Ranger charges them with, they'll either be released in a few hours on recognizance, or they'll sit in there eating up spaces. So while I'm very supportive and glad that our fellow voters have found additional funding for programs in parks, mostly capital programs, we need to realize that the situation that was talked about with the River Place docks is not going to be fixed citywide by more enforcement. We're just going to push troubled and addicted people off the River Place dock to the next place that has a slightly lower level of enforcement. So we're really just chasing our tail. So what we need is for the Rangers that are gonna speak after me, to keep the pressure on you and to educate all of our fellow citizens about how we need to shake loose money for stabilizing housing and for treatment programs so that there aren't as many injecting drug users being pushed around from one place to another, being transient and vagrant as they try and escape from different levels of enforcement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next three are Andy Jansky, Maggie Skandarian, and Scott Gibson.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here-
What's your name and the record again?
Sorry. Maggie Skandarian, I am the Johnson Creek Watershed Manager at City Portland's Bureau of Environmental Services. So I'm here really not to provide public testimony, but really want to provide some perspective from BES. We only recently found out about the report and wanted to be sure to have the opportunity to highlight the important multi-bureau, multi-issue nature, the implications that are here. In the nearly twenty years that I've spent working in the Johnson Creek Watershed, it's hard to identify any issue that's been as troublesome or as entrenched as those we faced in the last three to four years keeping our city natural areas safe and clean. BES has partnered with Parks for decades to acquire and protect hundreds of acres of sensitive natural areas citywide, with about one hundred and forty of those acres specifically in the Johnson Creek Watershed. Additionally, BES has acquired over three hundred acres that are, that support our ability to implement the Johnson Creek Restoration Plan, which helps us reduce the impacts from nuisance flooding in Johnson Creek. As a result of that land acquisition, we've done a number of restoration projects, and some of the land that's been purchased simply is protected to maintain the natural benefits that it provides. The lack of Ranger coverage for our east side property makes it nearly impossible to keep up with the calls that we get about illegal camping and other dangerous situations on the east side. I would ask you to pay particular attention to page twenty of the report that discusses the camping and the dramatic increase that we've seen in this situation over time. As the last speaker mentioned, the Ranger Program, these folks are doing an incredible job, and I just want to make sure you all know that the staff of these various different bureaus work together remarkably well. Astrid DeGroy is an amazing individual at Park, she and I talk multiple times a week. We're at wit's end, and we really feel like there's just a compelling need for a comprehensive approach to this, to this problem. We, as the last speaker said, we can get more Rangers and we can then do additional enforcement, but what we're doing is moving people from place to place and really not addressing the root problems. So I think particularly if we could get folks together from housing, parks, BES, police, we already work together to some degree. We'd like to work together more, we'd like to have tools that we could use to help actually address the problem. So I hope that there would be some funding in place to not only increase the Parks Ranger coverage, but help us address the root problems that are creating a fair amount of the demand upon them and that puts them, quite frankly, in danger and doesn't do anything to address the public health and safety issues that are at play. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrew Jansky, also known as Andy Jansky. I wanted to be a Forest Ranger my entire life, as I handed out the drawing I did when I was in Raleigh Park Grade School in nineteen seventy-four. This is a gem, it's pretty hard to find those things. Save those little drawings the kids gave you earlier. Anyway, right there, I say I like nature and animals, I like trees, I'd like to study trees and animals.
And then you did, so it worked out.
And I did. So I'm here to support Parks about funding Rangers. I'm involved professionally in Parks Management, and it's a very challenging job. I've done a lot of parks where we end up pushing people to the next park that we have to build and then do the same thing. So I know they typically get to deal with problems that no one else will, they're not paid enough, and it can be extremely scary when they're out on patrol alone, so. They provide a key role as being an ambassador, being seen and visible, and the numbers requested probably don't even accurately touch what is needed. But I do have one idea how to fix the problem. I'm part of an organization that provides volunteer trail patrol. Imagine the ski patrol, little red shirts on. Four to five volunteers roam the trails, they have positive contacts, they wear red shirts with crosses, they're trained in first aid, they help direct people, they call police and Rangers when they need to. These, they're all volunteers, limited cost, save, they'll save the city money. What's the problem? They're on bikes, and they're a part of the IMBA National Mountain Bike Patrol, and they're certified volunteers. We could easily get twenty-five of them around here. Bikes have been systematically excluded from Portland for twenty-five years. The next exclusion is coming up Monday, provided by Commissioner Fitz, Fritz, Fritz and Fish. So rather than solving problems and saving money, this action will just add another place that Rangers need to focus their enforcement. It's lose, lose, lose. So at this point, we need some leadership from the top. We need a, we need a Ranger, put on his hat and say, "We're gonna solve this problem", not divide the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, my name's Scott Gibson, I work with Labor's Local 483, and I, I'm here today to speak out in support of the Ranger Program. It's a very good program. We really hope the council sees their way to move more seasonal Park Rangers into permanent positions, give them some job security and good jobs, and we look forward to working with the Contingent Workers Task Force to look at the seasonal Rangers and their duties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Others?
The last three who signed up are Ellen Field, Mike Boyer, and Lightning Watchdog X.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You can go ahead, that's fine.
Morning, Mayor Hales, Commissioners, my name's Alan Field. I'm a neighbor, I'm not here for them at all. I've been very involved with the Park over the past ten, fifteen years, everything from moving the park to the community garden, to the off-leash area. I have close contact with Milks and Betsy Redfern about park upkeep. Galena asked if I wanted to provide any comment related to Rangers, and my focus has always been dogs. I did have a very bad troubling experience with Rangers a year and a half ago with my leashed, very old, arthritic dog. And since then, I've worked a lot with Brian Tierney and Galena, and I have to say, over the last year and a half, the quality and training of Rangers have greatly improved. And my message has always been, for Rangers concerning dogs, education is always the key. The Ranger Program isn't a dog-catching group, and that's not what it is, so it's very encouraging to hear that. What's always important is somehow if the city can involve the off-leash site steward groups, that would be great, dog owners patrol themselves. We have a forty-five-person listserv at Sewell Crest, and the Rangers should show some discretion in dealing with dogs. And one issue that's focused, that happens at Sewell Crest and is probably happening at other parks is what, in the mornings, you have a group of transients camping in an off-leash area, and for the most part, they're harmless, they wanna be left alone. What happens is, dog owners will stay away from the off-leash area, saying that the transients scare them. So I don't know if there's an easy fix to that, but it's nice that the Rangers know that's a problem, and they show discretion and don't necessarily ticket people. For Sewell Crest, what I've been telling people, trying to educate them that homelessness is not a crime, if you see a crime in presence, call nine-one-one. What I've been telling people, another way to do it is ask the mayor and the police chief to expand the Hawthorne Foot Patrol to cover Sewell Crest Park. So it's encouraging to hear Mayor Hales say that they're going in that direction. I think that would really help to have a growing partnership between the Police Department, the Foot Patrols, and the Rangers, so it's not just on the Rangers' responsibility to deal with the transients in Sewell Crest. This last year, there was a noticeable difference in quality of the transient population, it's a younger crowd, many obviously are altered mental state, a lot of medals collecting, and if the Hawthorne Foot Patrol could expand to cover Sewell Crest, that would help out the Rangers and help all the neighbors who write to me as a Neighborhood Association and get on Nextdoor Hawthorne and complain about that. So that's gonna be a growing issue this summer, so I'm optimistic that that can be a new focus this summer.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor Hales, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Salzman, Commissioner Fish, appreciate the time. My name is Mike Boyer, I'm an employee at the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. Up until this past January, I was the Crime Division Coordinator, assigned to the downtown area in particular, from two thousand eight through two thousand fourteen. So I was there for the inception of the funding through the Central- anything you need in terms of problem-solving on particular issues with parks, clear communications. I can't say enough positive about the work that they've done in the downtown area. I'm here on behalf of myself. I don't necessarily speak for the entire bureau, but I can say at ONI, we definitely value the park rangers. Personally, I'm a little indebted to Galena Burley. When she was a Crime Prevention Coordinator, she hired me as an intern, which is how I ended up here at the city. So as much as I am not a fan of testifying in front of council with the TV and all, I would do anything for the park rangers and Galena. You know, I think Galena's report made it very clear, the equity issues that are going on with the rangers. In downtown, we've been able to have the resources there, their services, and they've been a tremendous asset. And seeing those stats up on the big screen, how clearly it's just a portion of what's going on on the east side, I can't say enough how important their services would be for the issues that the police bureau expressed in their report to help them address public safety and livability issues. Beyond that, you know, they, they have a tremendous skill set in dealing with vulnerable populations. Being involved in their training processes and hiring processes, early phases, that was such a huge emphasis, and to see how they've interacted with social services, the houseless community, and other invulnerable populations has been truly impressive, and they've carried through on that training. So again, I appreciate your time this morning and hearing me provide some support for the park rangers.
Thanks. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog X. Seven rangers per 212 parks, I mean, anybody can look at that number and have a concern about that. One of the issues I haven't heard today is where does Multnomah County fit in on this type of funding? We're talking about a shortage of rangers on the east side. I think it's time that Multnomah County steps up and offers funding to do an IGA with the City of Portland and offers funding on these east side parks. Another issue I have, again, is pertaining to Multnomah County River Patrol. Again, I'm absolutely against any funding going from the City of Portland to Multnomah County River Patrol. Again, if you, you hear the term Multnomah County, they have a surplus of funds. The funds need to be coming from Multnomah County to River Patrol for more security patrols in various locations on the river, which is their job to do anyway, not to be funded by the City of Portland. They have ample funds to fund this. Another issue I have is that we're getting up to that July 1, no smoking in the parks. Now, during those discussions, everybody said there won't be any additional rangers needed to do that. Obviously, you can see by the numbers here, there needs to be additional rangers, so let's, let's not focus on the smoking issue. Let's focus on the fact that the east side parks have a limited amount of rangers, and there needs to be ample funding. I see seven full-time. It needs to probably be 14 if you're looking at the east side. I think that's a reasonable assessment to look at and get the proper data to determine that. But Multnomah County needs to step up to the plate and begin to fund this, and they need to begin to fund the River Patrol and make sure they have adequate funding. They've saved over 85% of their overtime pertaining to the suicide watch. That is up in the millions of dollars in savings alone, right there, just on one issue, that they have ample funding to fund additional rangers to handle this problem. Thank you.
You. Others?
That's all who signed up.
Okay. Would like to have the staff back up for a couple of questions, so.
Okay.
While staff's coming back up, Galena and Hassan, I want to just tell you a couple of reports that I had regarding the parks rangers working with people living in parks. One was in Forest Park, where it was a couple with a baby, and the rangers tried to connect them to services. There weren't any services available, and so the rangers went above and beyond and were able to connect with the families of the man and the woman who's, were in the park. There had been some estrangement, and the rangers were able to work with them to get the family to come together. And the parents of those campers then came to, later to thank the rangers for their intervention. So that, that's one example of a happy ending. One of a less happy ending was a camper, a mother with a small baby in Lentz Park. The rangers tried to connect her with services, and were told that the wait for a mother with a baby is six weeks to get into housing. And so that, in fact, about, a little less than six months ago, I was in Lentz for a neighborhood association meeting and talking about the, the challenges of people living in Lentz Park, and, and there's just nowhere for them to go. So I did appreciate the suggestion that there needs to be a multi-bureau look at how do we help people who have to live outside pending, finding more affordable housing. Certainly, there is a challenge on the Springwater Corridor in particular and the Foster Flood Plain, and I agree with Maggie Skandarian's characterization of Astrid Dragoy and her amazing work trying to find services in partnership with the rangers. If we were to get funding for additional full-time rangers, I think certainly assigning one or more to the Springwater Corridor would be a high priority for me. But first, let's go to the questions from council, and then I'd like to frame the discussion.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So first of all, great report. I think you've done a good job of following the, the direction that we gave and that I asked for in asking for this in the first place. I want to see some additional data to follow up on this, and that is, I asked, you know, this sort of conversation sort of got started when I asked Mike Abate, "So the park rangers' program is great. How will we know when we have enough of them?" I mean, we can, we clearly don't. Everybody gets that. But how will we know when we have enough of them? And that's obviously a matter of judgment as well as data. We're not going to be able to do that by data alone. But I'm very interested in seeing what national best practices are. What are other cities our size, larger or smaller, who have both a police force and a ranger program? How are they allocating that effort? How are they measuring level of effectiveness, level of coverage, and what lessons can we learn from them? In policing, there are some ratios, like two officers per thousand, that are crude and imperfect, but at least they're commonly used. So we can at least look at those ratios and say, "Okay, well, Denver has 1.6 officers per thousand, and we have one," you know. That's, that's not enough, and it isn't even all that helpful, but at least it's something. It's something sort of numerical. Again, you've provided some great data here. I think if, when we start cross-referencing those data with police calls for service, with arrests, you know, one of the great successes, Sergeant Deland was here, one of the great successes of the, of the foot patrol work in the police bureau is they had a huge number of contacts and very few arrests. Success! That's great. We don't want crimes. We don't want to arrest people, and the more situations that are intervened early by rangers or police officers that don't result in an arrest, it's a better outcome for everybody. So, so keep, please keep trying to find those kinds of data or those kinds of national best practices, and let's see how our ranger program compares to others in the country. Again, that won't necessarily dictate what we do, but it, it should help inform it. Second question that I have is, what did, what did we learn from the Holiday Park experience? So I don't know if you want to take that up now, but this was a kind of a one-off of a single property owner, Cypress Equities, paying for enhanced services. How'd that work out? What did it cost?
A couple of things. Reference to your first question, absolutely, and we recently became members of International Ranger Federation, so that will give us an opportunity to not only look within our nation, you know, national programs and local programs, but also internationally. So stay tuned. Holiday Park, one of the significant, I believe, takeaways from that was that when you put rangers and programming together, you see a tremendous change in the use of the park. That rangers alone do change the dynamic of behavior, not so positive behavior is displaced, but bringing that positive usage back up, very important having that programming component. Hassan did a lot of work with my predecessor on that. I don't know if you want to add something more specific?
When we, when we looked at the issues that Holiday Park had previous to a ranger presence, there was a lot, it was a, it was a negative image of the park, even though it's in a beautiful area, next to a mall, around a lot of businesses, and a lot of people avoided walking through the park just because of the element they perceived was in the park. Once ranger presence was consistent on a daily basis, and we provided programming, and just a, just a, just a happy face for people to see, we saw people walking through the park that normally would walk around from the MAC station just to avoid going in the park because of who was in the park. And so it was great to see people really coming in, eating lunch in the park, spending time with the rangers, talking to the rangers, people really asking how, asking about the ranger program. How do they, people also inquire, how do they become a ranger? And so because they saw the work we did in the parks, they saw the impact we had, they saw the negative element that was in the park basically go away. And so we received a lot of just great compliments from the Portland Police that worked in that area, because we were the eyes and ears there, a consistent presence, where we worked very closely with them, and some of the issues that they normally had to deal with were no longer a issue because there was a ranger presence in the park. So I do believe that just that presence alone and consistency does make a difference.
We do have a pilot program planned for this next summer as well, so our goal is to look at exactly what you said earlier, look at the data from police perspective, and then our own data and compare it and see what kind of changes we will be able to actually measure in terms of decreases in crime and criminal activity. We did not do that for the pilot last summer.
Yeah. So how much did that program cost this summer, last summer in Holiday Park? Do you remember?
I don't remember off the top, but we'll, we'll get you that, though.
Later.
Yep.
So Janet Beb's here, so we're going to invoke the spirit of Fred Kent for a moment, and that is, most people know the story of Bryant Park in New York, right? Surrounded by a high berm, lots of trees, big grass lawn in the middle. It was drug deal central. Fred Kent, under the Lindsay administration, removed a lot of the trees, lowered the berm, added entrances, and put 1,000 folding chairs in the park. Behavior changed radically overnight. Notice that there was no mention of police presence, rangers or otherwise. So I hear the voice of Charles Jordan in my ear, and I want to pose a question to the Parks Commissioner and your staff for later. Love the rangers program. Want more of you. I stopped by Holiday Park with my wife and played ping pong on National Night Out. Here's the tough call. Would you rather have a rec worker out there supervising ping pong, or would you rather have a ranger? If we're going to put more effort into Holiday Park? I know what Charles Jordan would say. "Sorry, rangers." He would say, "Put that rec worker out there. Give those kids something positive, dude, and you'll never need the ranger." So the principle that Fred Kent demonstrated in Bryant Park is still true, which is positive activity drives out negative activity. So I want to pose this fairly rhetorical question now for when we get into the budget process and make choices about how to enhance the level of programming in parks, because the right solution to a park with unsavory activity might not always be more rangers.
Mayor, can I just respond to one part of that? Because I actually was involved in, in, in the Bryant Park transformation, and hey, the one thing you left out is that the City of New York decided to privatize Bryant Park. It is no, it is not a public park. And just to give you an example, there is one of the safest restrooms in the City of Portland in Bryant Park, and that's because it's, it has an attendant. The reason Bryant Park is safe is they have actually private security force. One of the things I was going to ask our friends in terms of data is, when you follow through on the mayor's request for data about the ratio of rangers to parks or park space or whatever the national best practice is, which I think is a very important data, if you could drill down and ask the question, how many of those rangers are publicly funded and how many are privately funded? And I'll give you an example. New York City has made a judgment that they are going to allow businesses to pay for rangers in Manhattan parks. Now, there's an equity component to that, because the fact is, if, if, if a major company is located across from a park, that they can afford to pay for a ranger. But if, if you're in a low-income section of the Bronx, you know, how do you, how do you have the same model? So it raises equity concerns, but a lot of the rangers that you see that are, that are full-time, dedicated to parks in Manhattan, are actually paid for by private companies. And you know that, because as you enter the park, there's a sign saying, "The Gap Company is paying for this ranger," or whatever. So I, I would also ask you to consider, to what extent in those ratios at peer cities are, are the rangers publicly funded or privately funded? And I'm not advocating for privately financing, but for example, at Holiday Park, in, in, northeast Portland, Dan Beederman, who is the gentleman who actually did Bryant Park, has come out to Portland, hired by the company that's revitalizing the mall, and he wants to bring a Bryant Park model. I think that's great. The only problem is, we can't do that in every part of the city. It's, it's additional resources because there's a, a public-spirited business that wants to do that, but that doesn't help Commissioner Fritz build parks in East Portland or maintain those parks. So I think the data, I'd also like to see the ratios, but I'd like to also be able to separate out the privatization. And, and in New York City, there are now, I don't know, two dozen business improvement districts, and almost all the public spaces, all the major parks have a, have a private partner. And you can do that in a city that has that kind of wealth. That, that's not currently our model, and I'd love to see more private support for our parks, but if it, if it is something that we're going to fund publicly, let's, let's also figure out how we can afford it and what is, what is the right model.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a very helpful framing. I'd like to respond to the mayor's question. I would absolutely go for more rangers, and I'll tell you why. When we went to Shaver Elementary to announce that Beach Park was going to be built next door to their school, I got up there and I'm explaining that I'm in charge of the city. I make decisions for the city and, and, you know, polite applause. The rangers got up in their uniforms, talking about how they were going to be present in the park. Every single kid afterwards, there was a conversation about what do you want to do when you grow up? "I want to be a ranger. I want to be a ranger." So by being uniformed and being in green uniforms, and, you know, what we heard today was a great respect and even love for our ranger program, that's unusual for people who have to deal with some behaviors that are not right. And I think that, that, I agree with your question is, when will we know when we have enough? I know right now, we do not have sufficient, so that we shouldn't wait to figure out what's enough, because if we did, I think the, the number would be overwhelming. So thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you to the rangers who are here today in support of this report. I would like you all to, and if the cameras, I don't, we don't have our monitors going on here, but if the cameras could just pan to the, the front row here, this reflects the beauty of our city, with the people that we serve, our people are reflected in, in the rangers that are here today, and I'm really proud of you. Commissioner Fish, you were the birth parent of this expanded program. I've been honored to be the adoptive parent of it, and Galena has done an amazing job since she was appointed to be the manager, following in the footsteps of Art Hendricks, who is now the Equity and Inclusion Manager for Parks. And these things don't just happen. Galena's experience with the Office of Neighborhood and Involvement, we're talking about building community through parks, which is one of the reasons that I feel so honored to be in charge of the Parks Bureau. So to summarize, we have only 14 rangers on duty for over 200 parks. 12 of them are assigned west of the river because of the funding sources. So the parks east of the river are underserved. We have a few options. We have the status quo, which leaves the glaring inequity and underserved. We have more flexibility from historical commitments to patrolling forest parks in the Central Business District. That then would leave those areas underserved, and we heard from River Place that the temporary funding there is much needed and appreciated. And we can add additional funding in FTE. And what I have in the Parks Bureau budget is a conversion of seasonal rangers into full-time rangers, $80,000 to create six permanent positions.
$80,000 of ongoing?
Yes. And that's for six positions, and that's because of the great work done by Labor's 483 in the formation of the union and the great work done by human resources to set the salaries and the benefits of the seasonal rangers pretty close to the full-time rangers, because essentially they do very similar work. But the offset that we were required to put into the parks budget, because we weren't allowed to just ask for new ongoing, the offset is to have fewer seasonal rangers. So to be clear, that request does not expand services. In fact, in some ways, it will decrease service.
Well, that was, that, in fairness to you, that request was made before the city announced they had a $31 million surplus in this budget to carve up, so.
Right. So we now have a.
I think that's a good issue for the council to grapple with.
We now have additional ongoing resources, which I would hope we would have a, a discussion on the principles of how we're going to decide how to allocate those resources. I would like, so what we really need is seven, seven more full-time rangers in addition to the seasonal rangers. We have done the analysis of what is the current.
So that's a good issue for the council to grapple with.
We now have additional ongoing resources, which I would hope we would have a discussion on the principles of how we're going to decide how to allocate those resources. I would like, so what we really need is seven more full-time Rangers in addition to the seasonal Rangers. We have done the analysis of what is the coverage citywide and what do we need in the winter. Clearly, the challenges in the winter are more people sheltering outside, not having enough shelter space for them, and then how do the Rangers help them to live where they are? And we are going to be having a contract with Right to Dream Two to further improve our training of Rangers on how to interact with people living outside. I appreciate Hassan and Galena working on that. We need, you know, we have the city that we have, not the city that we wish we have. We're working towards the city that we wish we had. In the meantime, we need to give the Rangers the compensation and the tools to do what they can, given that many of the 2,000 people living outside in Portland are living outside in parks.
I'm a little concerned, Mayor, we're going to lose a quorum. Because I know you have a commitment coming up, and we have still some things...
I do, but I have a couple more questions. So do you want to get them on the record? One, you're going to be preparing a business plan. Please include in that what you envision as the role of volunteers.
Absolutely.
In addition to Rangers, okay? Want to see that, don't have to see it now. Secondly, when we get to implementation and budget issues, we currently have an intergovernmental agreement with the Multnomah County Sheriff for $98,000. Is that in your packages as a proposal to continue that?
It isn't currently right now.
So that will go away at the end of this fiscal year?
Correct.
So we probably need a package to come forward from the Parks Bureau to continue that intergovernmental agreement with the sheriff's office unless you have some other solution for how that service is going to be planned?
It's a do not exceed so it could carry forward into the next fiscal year, depending on how much we've utilized it.
Okay. Well, let's take a look at that, because if the sheriff is backing our play, obviously there are people in the community, and I agree with them, that don't want that to go I'll save the rest of my comments for when we vote. I have some more instructions for the budget proposals.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mayor Hales, I move the acceptance of the report.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call of the three of us, anyway.
Fritz? Well, thank you, most of all to our Parks Rangers and the work you do on the frontlines every day. I'm really proud of the work that you do. And thank you, Galena Burley and Hassan Athari for preparing this report. It's excellent. And thank you, Commissioner Fish, for really starting this program and giving it the attention that it deserved, even during the course of the recession. Let it be noted that we funded extras, services through the Ranger program during the recession, and it's now paying benefits. So thank you, everyone. I. Fish?
I want to start by thanking Andy Jansky for this. I archive all of my son's art and schoolwork, and he thinks I'm nuts. And so I really appreciate this. I can take this home and say, "This is why we do it," because someday you'll want me to reclaim something you did when you were younger, and I'd love that. I am so proud of the work of the Rangers, and I want to echo what the Commissioner in Charge said, thanking our team here for their excellent presentation and thanking the men and the women who wear the uniform. While the presentation was going on, I had my office pull a few things from the Internet because I want to be reminded about a different conversation we had in 2011. And I pulled some of the press coverage, and it was pretty scathing when this issue first came to council. We had some very big critics. There were some very caustic editorials, and there were a lot of people scratching their heads, saying, "If it ain't broke, why fix it? Why shift away from the clean and safe model? Why expand the Ranger program?" And I, one of the things I learned through that exercise was, we need to do a better job articulating the why. And so we did, and we took the challenge, and we articulated the why. And when we were finished, we had the whole community telling us we were on the right track. And that wasn't because we were making the case any more thoughtfully, it's because they were experiencing what it meant to have Rangers performing these functions, building relationships. In effect, I would say, Mayor, this is the essence of community policing, except they don't carry a gun. And instead of arresting people, they build relationships, and they go upstream, and they prevent things from happening. And we started hearing from people all over the city saying, "I know who my Ranger is. I have their phone number. I can call them when there's a problem." And we hired great people to lead this effort. In fact, I think, I can only find one story that was positive, and it was from The Mercury. And Dennis has now gone over the dark side. He's over another newspaper. But when he was at the, he did a story saying, "The city succeeds with gentler touch in the parks." And what he did is, he interviewed all the stakeholders, and this is in 2012, and they, two a person said, "This program was making a difference." Law enforcement, business, community, everyone was saying this was making a difference. You are the ambassadors doing great work in our community. And we have a basic principle in this city, which is, when people demonstrate that they are providing a valuable, basic service, and they do it as efficiently as you do, I think we are compelled to support your mission. I think we're compelled to. This is a basic service, and you've made a case today that you have exceeded our expectations. So I think we have to invest in your success, and I will look forward to working with Commissioner Fritz and my colleagues in the budget to do that. And finally, someday I hope to get a hat that says Ranger on it, but I'm reminded that until I give Sam Sacks my hair, my head size, he can't order one, and I am prepared to pay for it. All of us spend a lot of time out in the community, and when we're in our parks, particularly at official events, it is a point of great pride when our Rangers are there with us and when they are doing such a great job and seeing how they interact with the public. This is our chance today to thank the team for the report, thank the men and women who do the hard work for their service, and I hope have this council commit to continuing to improve the terms and conditions of the folks who serve. And one final note. In 2011, when we were getting a lot of flak for talking about doing something different, Commissioner Fritz stood shoulder to shoulder with me, and everything we did, she supported. And then when she became the Parks Commissioner, she put this program on a stronger foundation, and she ensured that the men and women who work for the city got to choose the representative of their choice, and through the bargaining process, secured better terms and conditions of employment. So I thank you, Commissioner Fritz, for being such a strong supporter of this program, and as long as I'm on the council, I will be a strong champion of what you are trying to do. Bye.
Saltzman?
Thank you.
Hales?
Well, first, I have to start with two warnings for Commissioner Fish. First of all, we should check the city code, Commissioner, because I know it's illegal to impersonate a police officer, and it might be illegal to impersonate a Ranger. So before you put that hat on, we should make sure that you won't get arrested for that. Secondly, as someone whose sons are older...
I will not be sending a letter to the Iranian governor.
All right.
Iranian government on any nuclear deal, Mayor.
Please don't, yeah. On your own email, either.
Yes, I do.
Secondly, as a father of sons who are older than Chapin, I'm sorry to report that you can take this home all you want, but it won't convince your son that you're not crazy until the testosterone starts to wear off around age 25. So let me go directly to some issues here. Sometimes I'm flummoxed in this role of being a community leader because you say things and you think you say them clearly, and then people pick them apart and say, "Well, what he really meant was, so I'll really try to do this." I'm not smart enough to do that. I want our folks from the press to know that. They probably already do. I'm not smart enough to not say what I mean, so I'm going to say what I mean. I love the Rangers program. I want to see more Rangers. I want to pay them properly, and we should have more of them for full-time. No argument about those issues. But...
End.
But, no. But before we get to simply funding more Rangers with the money we have, we've got some things to work out. The sheriff is backing our program right now. What is, lightning's right. We've got to sort out the question, and this is partly my job, as I sit down with the county chair and figure out who does what. We've gotten through the last couple of city-county budgets by getting a little more clarity about whose lane is which. And frankly, we've fuzzed this one up again because of an urgent situation on the docks in the river that required the Rangers' help, and we had to pay for it in order to get it. So that's an issue to put on the list for Cherkifori and I and others to talk about. But we've got to figure that one out before we just write checks to solve problems. Secondly, I am not suggesting that we privatize parks when I bring up the question of the Holiday Park example, but we have three business improvement districts in Portland in which property owners tax themselves to pay for enhanced services. I think we have three. We have the downtown Clean and Safe District, and we have two transportation management associations, one of which is in the Lloyd District. Seattle has 28 BIDs. Let me say that again. Our city, the same size as Portland, 150 miles north of here, has 28 such districts in which businesses tax themselves extra to pay for enhanced public services. I will be very favorably inclined, I'll say this sentence as clearly as I can, "I will be very favorably inclined towards budget proposals which leverage other funds in addition to the momentary good fortune of us having more of our own." I will be very favorably inclined towards having BIDs and other localized revenue measures pay for enhanced local services. So I want those who want more to help more. I think Cypress Equity's demonstrated that there's capacity in the Lloyd District and probably elsewhere to ask property owners to help fund enhanced services in places where we don't now. I think if you look at the situation in the Central East Side, you would reach the same conclusion that I've reached, which is it's time for a Central East Side Business Improvement District to fund enhanced services there. So I'm going to be pushing that idea, and I want us to not simply rush to pay for services elsewhere in the central city that people in the downtown Clean and Safe District are paying for through a BID. I hope I've been clear about that. So I will be very interested in budget proposals which rely on those principles of leverage because good times mean others have more resources, not just the city general fund. Great work so far. More conversations to come. Thank you very much. Bye. Okay. Good work, everybody. Let's move on to the regular agenda. Item 260.
Authorize a grant agreement with Janus Youth Programs, Inc. for $15,000 to support one outreach specialist to continue outreach to homeless and runaway youth and ongoing training and coaching of volunteers.
Don't, do we have a presentation on this? Yes, we do. Sergeant Delan. Good morning.
Good morning. Apparently, I've been abandoned by Dennis again. So I'm here today, I was supposed to be here with Dennis Lundberg from Janus Youth. I'm not sure where he's at, but I'm here representing the Police Bureau and giving our support for this proposal. As you know from previous testimony, due to a clerical error through their grant program, the Yellow Brick Road portion of Janus Youth was unfunded as of October of last year, and they're not able to apply again until October of this year. In response to that, we spent the fall campaigning for funds from other sources. The Clean and Safe Board responded by donating $15,000 to the program, and I'm very proud of council for matching that. I think that, speaking for the Foot Patrol of Central Precinct, the program was vital to our success and to give us additional options in trying to address the various things that we were addressing in downtown Portland. They were our greatest partner in this. Not once did I call and not get exactly what I needed from them. And so if I may call it a personal crusade of mine to continue this program and to continue funding of this program, they have my full support.
Thank you very much. Questions for Sergeant Delan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this item? Come on up.
My name is Joe Walsh. I represent Individuals for Justice. I just want to take advantage of speaking in a positive sense twice in a row. Obviously, our organization would support the continuation of this program, and we urge you to support it. And unfortunately, from our understanding, it was some kind of a clerical mistake that they were excluded from applying and to keep the funding going. So we hope that you support it. We need more of these things. I know we're always asking for more money, but that's kind of what we do as activists. We ask you for more money and more involvement, so we would just support your continuation of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, still, I think. My name is Charles Johnson, for the record. And there is some connection between this and the earlier item where we had the 25-page good report from Galena, the new Parks Security Director. We didn't talk about distressed juveniles that are encountered by the Rangers, an area that really should get specific attention. And although it's one particular agency, Janus here, who had a paperwork glitch, I want you to know that all citizens want to see tight cooperation between you and the different semi-private organizations that, such as NAFI and Janus, that are not just a safety net but a lifeline for homeless children. So I'm glad that the police officer was able to come up here and present the fact that we did find a bridge solution. That's certainly what needs to happen in a city that just talked about its $30 million revenue ahead of projection and surplus. So I hope that Janus and NAFI will be facilitated in a conversation with the Rangers to really make those numbers reach out. Social science research shows, as you mentioned in the past couple weeks, that when children have adverse experiences, that really sets them up for failure. So I hope that in addition to this little bridge financing, we can expand the program and cooperate with the Rangers to get more outreach to distressed youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Anyone else? Then it's an emergency ordinance roll call, please.
Fritz? Aye. Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Hales?
Great partnership. Aye. 261.
261. Authorize a contract with Land Morphology, PC to provide planning, design, and construction administration services for improvements to Leach Botanical Garden not to exceed $433,314.
Mr. Fritz?
Good morning. Thank you for your patience. Kiaseli?
Go ahead. My name is Ross Swanson. I'm the capital project manager for Portland Parks and Rec. I am joined by Kiaseli, the Planning and Development Manager for Portland Parks and Rec, and we are here for questions. But I'm here today to request city council approval for the contract with Land Morphology Landscape Architects for the Leach Upper Garden Development Project. Again, the contract amount is $433,314. The contract scope of work will provide, designed for the recently expanded upper garden property. Recently, we acquired 1.3 acres adjacent to the garden, and that's sort of catalyzed the need for this design work. The second task at hand will be to develop a strategic development and phasing plan for the garden, and then finally, we'll have construction documents prepared for Catalyst Project to help provide better access to the garden. In particular, I'm excited about this design firm because they occupy a niche market in botanical garden design, including they've designed gardens for the Brooklyn Botanical Garden and Chuhli Garden to the north of us. But more importantly, their, the lead designer, the guy who'll be putting pen to paper worried about scope, schedule, budget like myself, has also been an executive director for small gardens himself. So while he's worried about my worries, he's also going to be worried about David Porter's worries and how to move forward in that garden. Some of the nuts and bolts, the contract has 23% MWESB participation. The contract is funded through a combination of SDC, Parks SDC, and PDC's TIF funds through the Lentz District. We anticipate construction to start in the spring of 2017, and we do already have a rather extensive public outreach committee put together, and we're going to be meeting on March 19th, and it's an 18-member committee with broad diversity. And that's it. Thank you. Questions?
Other questions? Doesn't sound like there are any. Thank you. Anyone want to speak on this item?
Hi. I'm Linda Morrow, and I'm president of Leach Garden Friends Board. Now, most of you were here in 2010 when the Leach Botanical Garden Master Plan was approved by city council, and the master plan has served as the city's guide for the future development of Leach. In 2012, the plan was updated to further define the Upper Garden Development Project. And with the approval of this contract today with Land Morphology, we will begin to realize the vision for Leach outlined in this master plan. We feel this is of critical importance to... We feel this is of critical importance to the community immediately surrounding Leach, but it will also have benefits for all of Portland because botanical gardens offer a needed respite from the nature deficit that's talked about so much these days because so many people live in urban areas. Botanical gardens are places of stunning beauty and sources of education and conservation. They inspire people to preserve and to conserve, but in order for people to embrace these values and pass them on, they need to have access in their own neighborhoods to places like this. Realizing the potential of Leach is critical to this East Portland neighborhood, a highly diverse, underserved area with very few amenities currently in place. I think we need to keep in mind that Leach is more than a park, more than a natural area. It's a botanical and cultural treasure where education happens, where culture happens, where art happens, and healthy communities are formed. Raising Leach to the standard of our other world-class botanical gardens here in Portland, like the Japanese Garden, the Chinese Garden, and Hoyt Arboretum, will enhance Leach's financial sustainability, and it will make Leach a regional attraction which will enrich both East Portland and the city as a whole. We are very excited to move ahead on this project. It's been 30 years in the making, and we are grateful for your support.
Thank you.
I'm going to defer for a moment. Carol Hertzberg.
Hi, I'm Carol Hertzberg. I'm a PDC Project Manager, and I'm working with Ross on this Leach project. Just very quickly, Leach is very important to us because it is a key cultural landmark in an area that has few and many are unknown, and Leach, I'd say, outside of the immediate area, is unknown, and we want to change that. So, and the other thing that excites me about this project, it is a real partnership between Parks and PDC, and this is a new model that we would like to follow, and we're really, really thrilled that it's happening.
So I'm David Porter, Executive Director of Leach Botanical Garden. First off, I'd like to thank Kia and Ross and the City Parks staff. We could not do this project without their leadership and organization and wisdom. It's very important. Second point that I'd like to make is that, in many ways, Leach's partnership, as I think all of you know, we are the host also for Portland Audubon's East Side Operations. The wonderful Talon Youth Program operates there. They have bird programs and education programs, and they're east-side bases there. So we're growing relationships that make Leach a resource, a platform in which many different things can take place, not just the beauty and the botanical collections. It's important, but it's a very nuanced place. I'm very, very excited about the outreach program that's accompanying this new design, and I'd like to introduce James Draznan, who is our new Development Director, who will be helping us raise private sector money to match public money for the garden. And James has some printouts that he'd like to hand to the Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners. We are so conscious of being in East Portland in a very extraordinary place in the city, and one of our donors was kind enough to give us an anonymous donation to support really significant outreach to people in East Portland. So we are engaging with a group, a community engagement group called the NICE, Northwest Institute for Community Engagement, who will be doing intercept surveys at places like the new Portland Mercado and the Jaye District, talking to people in their places and in their languages about Leach Botanical Garden. What you are seeing is the almost-finished version of a full-page ad that will be in the East Portland News, dropping to 50,000 East Portland households on April 15th. The ad will be in four languages, one of them being English. Vietnamese, Russian, and Spanish were identified by an AmeriCorps person that we had working who showed that the city's most prominent languages other than English were Russian, Vietnamese, and Spanish. And so, there will be ways for people to participate in talking about and learning about Leach that will help inform our really great design team as we move forward. I think it's going to be one of the most exciting phases of Leach Gardens' existence. We will learn a lot, and we hope that Leach will no longer be Portland's secret garden after all those people hear about it. Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot. Partnership is absolutely with friends of Leach Garden, too.
It's all right, Carol. Goes without saying.
Thank you all very much. Questions for the team?
I just want to note, Mayor, that one other thing about the Leach Garden is it has a terrific gift store, and they have holiday sales during the year, and you can actually buy herbs. You can buy, there's a beautiful book about the Leach legacy and family, and the space in their home is available for rental, and it's really one of the gems in our system.
It is.
So congratulations.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then it is an emergency ordinance. Let's take a roll call.
Fritz.
So this is an emergency because we want to get the money out of the door and get going on the project as quickly as possible, and thanks to Kia Selly and Ross Swanson. I have to say, as the Leslie Knope of Portland Parks and Recreation, I enjoy having an R. Swanson in the bureau. Thanks to Commissioner Fish, whose vision and insistence on assigning Portland Development Commission's tax increment financing money to this project was visionary and is the reason that we're able to do this today in partnership with some Parks System Development Charge money that we now have, recognizing that the community around Leach Botanical Gardens and the Business District in Lentz doesn't have the capacity to help fund things like this absent public resources. And so, this is an underserved area of the city, and it does indeed have an absolute gem, both in the house and in the garden, and I encourage, it's open for business even today, so I encourage folks to go out the next beautiful day that we've been blessed with and enjoy it. Thank you for your support. Aye.
Fish.
I love what's, Commissioner Fritz, I love what's on this handout we were given. Leach Garden is an East Portland public garden, and that's why it's very important to us. In addition, as I learned, it's one of the great botanical gardens in the world. And the Leaches were really visionaries, and it's a wonderful place to visit, and we're lucky to have such great leadership. You know, 10 years ago, you wouldn't have said that if you went out to Lentz and beyond that you'd need more than a day to hit all the great attractions necessarily. But today, in addition to Leach Botanical Garden, the Foster Natural Area, Zenger Farm and the new Urban Grange, Lentz Park, the Mercado, which is slightly, obviously, to the, all the vitality that's going on because of the community members advocating to make sure they got their fair share of resources is very exciting. Congratulations to all, and we look forward, as a council, to joining you when the work is completed. Aye.
Saltzman.
Yeah, it's a great step forward, and I appreciate all the efforts to make and keep Leach Botanical Garden a great place to be. Thank you. Aye.
Hales.
Great place, great team. Look forward to more great results. Thank you very much. Aye. Okay, we have three second reading items remaining. 262.
I'm in contract with Brown and Caldwell, Inc. for additional work and compensation for the Southwest 86th Avenue Pump Station and Upper Tenements Project, number E09051, for $316,194.
Roll call, please.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. 263.
Authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Southeast Hawthorne Salmon Sewer Reconstruction and Green Street Project, number E08668, for $4,590,000.
Roll call, please.
Fritz.
Well, I particularly appreciate the extra effort to ask the community about the hours and duration of this project, so thanks, Commissioner Fish. Aye.
Fish.
We're also, based on the conversation we had during council, we're going to schedule an event before the construction begins, just to make sure the community and the businesses understand what is planned and give us one last chance to fine-tune it. And I was pleased, and I think in response to your question, Amanda, that they confirmed that holidays and the business and the community festivals have been carved out as days for where there will not be construction, so we will be trying to limit the impact. Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. And 264.
Authorize a contract with Raftellus Financial Consultants, Inc., for the Water Bureau Cost Allocation Audit Project in the amount of $169,490.
Roll call.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Hales.
Aye. The auditor has requested that item 265, which is scheduled for 2:00 PM, be referred back to her office, so without objection, I am referring that. I am going to her office, and we will reconvene at 3:00 PM, not 2:00.
Mayor, do you have a sense of how long that program will last?
I would estimate an hour and a half. We're recessed till 3:00 PM.
I would say that's a wild underestimate.
Yeah, yeah, two hours. Yeah, you're right.